Order at 6:01 PM. Like to welcome everybody. Our first item of business is roll call. All other persons are present and present in chamber. Our next item is a pledge of allegiance and a silent prayer in lieu of invocation. Next item is the reading of the minutes of the previous meetings held on April 13th and April 20th. There are attachments one and two in your packet. What are your wishes?
Move to approve the minutes.
We have a motion by Dean, seconded by Ryan. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none? Please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. Next item on agenda is a presentation by Andy Barnett on the McMillan Library Learning Futures Project. Take it away, Andy.
All right, thank you very much. Hope I'm up on the screen?
Yes.
All right. We're looking at a redesign of the library. We're looking for, well, we run through the program. You'll like to enjoy. This is information only. The library is not requesting money from the city in addition to the funding the city has already provided. The library board is lead on this project. City council doesn't need to take action and it will try to be done in 10 minutes. So we started planning by looking at how people are actually using this space at the library and what ways we weren't supporting that use. People were in trying to do meetings. People were trying to find quiet spaces. We didn't have that. We looked at what the Chamber of Commerce was doing. We looked at Midstate's long-range plan. We look at the, I looked at the dive that Courage did on community needs. And we said, which of those fall within the library's mission statement? We toured libraries, Wisconsin libraries, Twin City libraries, Chicago area libraries. I have relatives in the Twin Cities. A lot of the board didn't spend any money sending me up there. We also did our own community-based process where we invited members of the community to come in and discuss what they wanted the library to be in the future. And we upgraded under the limitation of we weren't looking for new staff. We weren't looking to go make the building any bigger. This is a redesign only using existing staff. And also no reduction in the space for books. Books are a core piece of our mission. We were not going to reduce the space for books or anything else. How big is this project? Well, the adult room upstairs is 11,000 square feet. It's almost 50% of all the public space in the library. We're also doing the Fine Arts Center, which is another 4,000 square feet. And we're doing the all-purpose room, which is another 1,200 square feet. So we had to move half of our space into the other half of the space to get the project underway. So the library is a very crowded place right now. What are we trying to get out of this? We were looking to be a business enterprise center and a co-working facility because we saw people using the facility that way. What are we looking at? We have a copier, printer, fax scanner, coffee house. We have everything that a co-working facility would, would want to have. And we're free and we've got a big parking lot. So we said, how do we support that better? Classes available, online classes that the library pays for. A lot of them are business-related. We have software like the Adobe Creative Cloud. We have hardware and AV that people just don't have at home. And a lot of people don't even have it work. So we have something there and we wanted to find ways to make it more accessible. Needed space for formal and informal meetings and for people to work quietly. We did not really have that. Our space was too big, too un, too much one big space. And it made it hard to work quietly. And we have staff assistance, which is a great thing to have in a co-working space. One of our focuses over the last decade or so has been learning by doing and creating. We wanted people to go from just seeing technology on their phone to using technology to be able to actually create and design things with technology. This is important for teams who are looking at what do they want to do with their lives? People are looking, maybe I'm going to Midstate. Should I, can I dip my toe in the water before spending money? And people who need to be retrained. You need to be retrained just to hold your job. There's always new software. There's always new things you need to learn. And we're building on what we did in our children's room. Our children's room has a lot of hands-on things where kids can come in and put blocks and create things. And our program over there was very hands-on. So this is an expansion of that. It also is an expansion of the maker space we currently have, which is small in a former storage room in the very back of the library down a corridor. So this is a way to get that existing maker space out where people could see it. And our maker space will be about 1,500 square feet. It's a real sizable room. We're very pleased with that. We also are very focused on training and education because training and education, lifelong learning, that's what we do for a living at the library. We're offering these classes, but we're working to fill the gaps. We love our public schools. We love Midstate. We love UWSP. But there's a place there that's not covered where people are doing education, but they don't have time for a six-week course. They don't have, they can't fit it into their schedule. They want to just do something small, maybe learn a little skill. And we, we're in that gap. And we're working with our partners like Midstate, UW Extension, Job Center to offer classes in addition to the ones, the online ones that we subscribe to. So building those skills is an important thing for us. We needed more rooms for individual and group training. There was no place for someone to sit down and take an online class. And that was a real failure of design in 1970. Didn't they know about that? Well, it became real evident that in the last year that we need those kinds of rooms. And we're looking at improving the theater and the Fine Arts Center. The theater and the all-purpose room. We need that because our programming space needed to be upgraded. The Fine Arts Center is going to have more seats, better sound, and vastly improved accessibility. I'll show you a map of that. We're building a new meeting room of 600 square feet where people can under, can have training. Courses will have, be like all new training rooms. They'll have a big screen, big whiteboard. It can be a conference. It can be a small classroom. We're upgrading the all-purpose room. That, parts of that room were, are still, well, not anymore. As if, as of today, they've torn off the wall. But parts of that room were unchanged from 1970. And it really needed to be fixed. So other things? Two group study rooms, three individual study rooms. The skylight was damaged. Repair that and improve it. We're getting new furniture for the adult room. Some of that was 50 years old. We're shifting to digital controls, which gives us more control. And it's an energy savings, too. We're replacing the 30-year-old flooring in the main vault room. That is part of, from the basis, the repair of the skylight and the flooring were the basis of our request to the city for funding. And the rest of it is not, was not part of our request. We're replacing ceiling and lighting just everywhere. There's about 9,000 square feet of ceiling coming out and new lighting going in. And just getting a 50-year-old building up to code is a vast improvement because it was not up to code. It was up to 1970s code. As long as we didn't change things, we could leave what it was. Once we start touching it, suddenly we had to meet new code, including the Americans, Americans with Disabilities Act. Uh, money. This is a $2 million project. That was our estimate at the beginning. Our bids came a little under that. But of course, bids are, bids aren't your final cost. We received a matching grant for half the cost from Legacy. The city committed 109,000, which was the estimated cost of the flooring and the skylight repair. Bell Family has chipped in 100,000. The library endowment has pledged 400,000. Left us 400 short. We're in a capital campaign. We've raised 210 of that. And we continue to fundraise. The city had some spare money they wanted to throw our way. We'd love it. But we're not asking the city for any more money. So our timeline is April 2nd. We got our bids back. May 10th, the construction started. We're scheduled to end construction in November of this year. It's a large project. They're doing a lot of things, but most of them are pretty simple things. Ceiling, lights, carpeting. Most of this is not that complicated. So let me walk you through the space. This is the stairs to the upper level. Children's rooms over here. This is the maker space, which we'll look in some detail. These are the new meeting rooms. Quiet work area over here. We've got some nice tables in front of a big window here. Here's our public computers and a service desk and the redesigned skylight. The maker space has a number of features. This wall is going to be where we keep our equipment. 3D printers, laser cutter, woodmill. Anything else we add will probably go over there. This is where we will keep our computers. They're on wheels. They're wireless. We can arrange them any way we want. But we will have the Adobe Creative Cloud on there. We'll have computer-assisted design and manufacturing software on there. That's what will let people then print things over to the 3D printers and the laser cutter. Middle table area for people to do work there on circuits and crafts and whatever it is we're doing that day. The area over here is a planning area with a big whiteboard. And this is the recording studio. It's about 100 square feet, but it's a nice size. We have a recording studio already. It's next to a bathroom. This one will not be next to a bathroom. These are the meeting rooms on the far wall overlooking the parking lot. This one's about the size of the current McCourt Room. And like I say, the tables can go either way. Small rooms for individuals or couples that want to work on something. Two larger rooms for a group that needs to work together. Students, business people. You often need to work together and you, you need quiet sometimes. But you also need to be able to talk. You need to be in a Zoom meeting. You need to be taking an online class. The theater gets a nice redesign. All new seats, 250 permanent seats, which is more than we have now. On this side, there's a ramp to the stage and it's zero pitch. So it doesn't go uphill or down. It starts in back and goes absolutely flat to the stage. So there's, that makes access to the stage much easier. There's five places for wheelchairs. Current setup has none. This predates Americans with Disabilities Act. There's a hearing loop around the center portion that will interact directly with people's hearing aids. And rather than a pull-down screen, we're going to paint the wall and use that as a screen. So in brief, we're renovating a 50-year-old city-owned building for a new future. It's 95% privately funded. We're adding resources for the community in terms of a meeting room. Meeting rooms, maker space, co-working, small rooms, individual rooms, and a much more accessible theater. Our fundraising is finishing up and our construction is underway. And if you'd like to see some pictures, see this, these floor plans again, we have them up at McMillanreimagine.org. And I'll show you some pictures quickly. This is the upper lobby. That's where the maker space will be behind the elevator. Those are the kinds of tables we use for whatever kinds of programs we do. They're very flexible. Everything's on wheels and can move out of the way. There's the recording studio and the planning area. The skylight gets a real, real upgrade. Less lights, more vision up. A lot more light will come down. And fans to prevent the kind of damage we've seen in the past from condensation. When you have something that's that big and tall inside a building, you end up with condensation. We've got, we, we have problems up there that this will fix. The three small meeting rooms, the two larger meeting rooms, and the big meeting room in the middle. And that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Andy. Anybody have any questions? See, we have a question from the audience, from Josh. Was with somebody. Okay, thank you. Come up to the podium, Josh.
Hi, Josh.
Turn the button on the microphone on the bottom where it says push. Is it green light on?
Yep.
There you go.
Oh, there I am. So Andy, thank you for his presentation. My question concerning the roofing. How much we can handle like during like a heavy snowstorm? Cause I would rather not see a whole bunch of stuff fall on top of people when they're upstairs.
How much can, can what handle?
The ceiling like, just the ceiling as a whole.
Josh is wondering about the snow load.
Yeah, the load, the load limit for public libraries is more than parking ramps. So we're, we aren't worried about the roof falling in it.
All right, thank you. My other question is, this is actually for the whole common councils along, along with the library. How much family-oriented space is there so we can have like new families come into the library and be like, hey, this is a pretty cool place. Maybe we should like make this in, into like a new home and a, and a Scottish River area.
What was the beginning of?
How can we make the library a more family-friendly place along with the rest of the city? So maybe new families who want to move to Wisconsin Rapids someday.
I think this is a giant step forward, what they're doing there.
It is. I agree with you, yes.
Yeah, we look forward to having the coffee house open, restoring our spaces, chairs, tables. You know, the little rooms, sometimes they're for one person or two. But if a parent comes in and is trying to take an online class, being able to keep their child with them rather than having them wander through the library, that's really useful. So.
That's good.
We've gone to great lengths to make the library family-friendly.
Thank you, Andy. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Josh. Seeing nothing, thank you. I'm sorry, Jake, did you have some?
Yeah, I guess this question would be maybe more for Tim. I seen we were contributing for the, was it the floors and some other piece of the renovation? What else do we have? Is it, do we have room in the capital improvement plan to put more money towards this if they need it? Or where do we stand with that?
Uh, I thought I saw Tim on here. Oh, there he is. Let's see if he pops on. I know in the current budget allocation, that's where I believe the 109,000 is allocated. But I'm not sure if there's any extra room.
And we have, we have ongoing needs. So I mean, we'll be, we have a five-year plan and we are, we will be requesting more money in the future, too. So we, we appreciate, we should appreciate the support we've got.
Thank you, Andy. Yeah, with, hopefully in the spring, we'll, we'll have more of a discussion on capital improvement needs across the city. After next year or through the budget process. All right, moving on to item number. Clarification and possible action regarding the council's appointments of the alderperson member and the alderperson alternate member on the Ethics Board. Jennifer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I sent you all a, an email explaining why we're taking this up. The April agenda actually had that we were, you were electing a, an alternate member to the Ethics Board. We already have an alternate member. That's Jake. His term expires on November 1st of this year. At that meeting, we, you elected Alderperson Kubashak for a term, I believe, ending in 2023. So what we needed was a, a regular alderperson member, not an alternate. So one of my suggestions was if you wanted to consider possibly making Jake the regular alderperson and keeping Thad the, the alternate alderperson. But it's totally up to you what you do.
We're just trying to clarify the, the roles of the two members.
I'll make a motion to keep Jake as the current member and Thad as the alternate.
We have a motion by Bemke, seconded by Veneman. Any further discussion, clarification? Seeing none? Please cast your ballots. Thank you. That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. Thank you for that clarification. Next item is my appointments to various boards, commissions, and committees, which is attachment number three. I want to also thank Ryan for willing to be the library appointee. I think your, your skills will be a necessary asset to the current activities going on at the library.
I make a motion for approval.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Kubashak, seconded by Mr. Austin. Any further discussions? Seeing none? Please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. Item number eight is consider a resolution extending the emergency declaration proclamation regarding the COVID-19 pandemic. See attachment four. And also for your information, I believe you were included on the email that yesterday was the beginning of optional masks at city hall and city buildings. And then also along with that, the current COVID leave that we have expires the end of June. And I changed that to the end of May to get through the school season. But then, then, then at that point, it would be, starting June 1st, there would no longer be the additional COVID leave provided to the employees. So I just wanted to update you on that. Questions, comments, wishes?
Uh, just for clarification, Mr. Mayor, I don't, I'm looking through my emails here and I don't see, that's where obviously I brought my face covering thing in. I didn't see an email addressing that. I guess it doesn't matter, but I mean, just to the point of I didn't, I didn't get any communication.
Okay, I, I'll double check that. I thought it was sent to all units. And, and maybe you guys weren't included in that as aldermen and not at all units. But on Friday, I sent out that email, at least through, I know it went to all city staff. And it's whether now it's, your wish is whether or not you want to continue or affirm what I did or you can overturn it and come up with something else.
So just for clarification again, I apologize if I'm out of order. We're, we're getting to the point, or at least it feels like we're getting to the point where we may not need the emergency declaration and what that, and again, for everybody and, and the new people as well, what this was, was if a case that the common council couldn't get together to make a vote or to make decisions, we placed the powers related to COVID incidences or decision-making into the mayor's hands. So then the question is, do we want to continue that with what is, hopefully we're on the upswing. Hopefully, I got my fingers crossed, but I'm only one of what, 336 million people. So with that being said, the question is, do we want to move forward on this? And continue to give the mayor the authority to be able to do that? Or is this something where we think that we're out of the woods? At least to be able to convene a meeting in an emergency situation to make a decision that would affect this organization moving forward? So I, I guess that's where we're at. So I mean, I, I, without, you know, having a motion on the floor and actually having discussion or whatever. I mean, it, it's a case where I, I, I don't know. Are we, are we at that point where we now think that we can do that? Or, or is this a case where we want to continue with the mayor having the authority for one more month? I think that's where, what we're actually voting on right now.
So I think I've been, I think the last couple of months now advocating that. I didn't feel it was necessary. It's up to you or up to the council. I think with the remote options that we have, should we need to call a meeting, we can do that. I'm indifferent. Dean?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. What does the, how does that affect? I'm inclined to agree that we don't need to continue it, but I wonder how does that affect the May 31st ending of the COVID leave then? Does that have anything to do with the?
I guess Attorney Schill, if you could weigh in on your opinion here that if they choose not to continue the resolution, would that change the COVID leaves? Is that to expire at the end of May now?
No, it wouldn't. I mean, I guess what, what you have done outside of the council meeting is basically stated it's going to end at the end of May. And I'm assuming the council at this point is, I mean, even you, you can, you can cease doing the emergency declarations, but still affirm or modify, you know, what you just did. So I'm, so if, if the council is in agreement with having the COVID leave stop on May 30th then, or May 31st, then basically, you know, that could be part of the motion that they're basically affirming that. And then you can still terminate the emergency declaration.
Thank you.
Would that be two separate motions then?
Dean was wondering if that would need to be two separate motions or if we could do it in the one.
No, because if, if you look at the emergency declaration, it kind of addresses a few different things. So you could pull out, you know, specifically what the mayor, that you want to affirm that the leave. It's kind of like what's one of your last actions under the emergency declaration. It's to basically say the leave is going to end on, at the end of May and the declaration is then going to, you know, end today or, but that could all be in one motion.
Okay, thank you. Answer your question. Tom? You're up. You didn't want to speak? You didn't need, okay, thank you. Jake?
Thank you. So the two main factors for me in this have been waiting for everybody to have a chance to get vaccinated. I believe we were at that point. Anybody in the community who's wanted to get vaccinated can. And the second is the ability to meet via video conference soon. I, I don't feel that any emergency decisions would need to be made without the council now that we can do that. So I think it might be time for this to come to an end. If it's not now, then when is it? Because everybody's had the chance to get vaccinated at this point. And I believe we need a motion in the positive. So I'll make the motion that we continue the emergency declaration.
Thank you. Uh, Mr., we'll wait for a second. Okay. Thad, seconded it. And Thad, you can speak.
Yeah, just for clarification, Ms. City Attorney Sue Schill, what you're saying, or I think what Dean had asked the question was, any actions that the mayor had taken during his authority of the emergency declaration will not retroactively be nullified by us voting on this. So in other words, that, that May 31st date, unless we specifically want to use a motion and strike that down through an action of the council, anything that was done previously.
strike that down through an action of the council, anything that was done previously was under the guise of the authority that the mayor had. Is that correct?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. So, long story short, I don't think we need to make a motion at all type of a thing to continue it to May 31st. It is, if we didn't like that, then that's when we would now, once we strike this down or not extend the emergency leave, I'm sorry, emergency declaration, then we could look at any policy that was enacted. But one, any of the policy that you enacted during that is still active or still current until it sunsets.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Just for clarification, so we could make a motion to repeal the emergency declaration at the end of May?
This one would, this emergency declaration would go to the next council meeting, which?
Would be in June.
In June.
Okay.
Yep.
Or it repeals, and it would end tonight?
Correct.
And then in that same motion, then we could have the COVID for the employees go through the end of May?
So like, so by me announcing that or making it an action, it's the way it is, unless you want to make another motion after this to say what I, that you don't approve of what I did, and you want to change it to something else. So if you agree with it, or you're fine with it, then we wouldn't need to do any action. Correct, Attorney Schill? Okay, thank you. Did I clarify? Okay, thanks. Any further discussion?
I think just for the public, we should clarify why we're voting, why, as Jake said, putting the motion in a positive. So you have to vote to continue it, so if the vote is not approved, it will not be continued.
That's correct. You just explained it well.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, so it is an affirmative motion, and so yeah, if you vote negative to shoot it down, or vote no, then we're, at the end, if it's by the majority, then it will no longer be enacted.
Thank you.
Did I confuse anybody on that now? I saw some looks.
That's right.
So the motion is to continue with the declaration. And seeing no further discussions, please cast your ballots. That motion failed, seven Nays to one A. Sounds good. So yeah, anything that should come up, obviously, we can easily call a special meeting. Thank you. Next item is consider for approval a resolution authorizing execution of the Department of Natural Resources Principal For Given Financial Assistant Agreement. This is a request from Water Light, and Adam is here to help maybe explain the resolution, if you'll indulge him.
So the city, it's already on, he left it on, so. So we were part of this program from 2017 to 2020, it was a three-year program, and the DNR decided to shorten it to a one-year program. So we re-upped for the application, we got approved $153,000, and what it is, is money given from the EPA to the DNR to administer to certain qualified cities. So residents, schools, daycares can replace private-owned water services that are made out of lead. And so what they would do is they would go and contract out a pre-qualified plumber, which we can supply them the list of those plumbers, and they can then have a replace, come back to us, and we'll fully reimburse the cost of the replacement. And so all this is really saying that it's a formality, going back to the DNR, saying we're going to agree to the principal forgiveness loan, and then they'll write up the financial agreement, which you'll have to sign at a later date.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Adam? I'm sorry, Jake.
Thank you. Is there, would we be able to prioritize K through 12 schools and daycares over private residences? Or is that part of the deal, we have to include all of it?
It's all of it.
Okay.
Anyone that has one can come to the utility and contract that out. Now, as of now, we don't have any records of any K through 12 schools that have lead services. It's only, it's only service, it's only residents right now.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Any other questions, thoughts, comments? Go ahead.
Adam, how many, for the $153,000, how many water laterals do we think that we can administer? I know it isn't, you know, a unit quantity type of a thing, because everybody's a little bit different, but how many people do you think we can help out with this?
Approximately 34. Now, that only goes to the end of 2021, so I suspect there's going to be much less than 34 that actually get it done, due to the fact that the plumbers are probably going to be already scheduled out with certain projects.
Any further, go ahead, Matt.
Eligible for the funding? Is there a cutoff on eligibility that's easily understood, or?
Yep, it just needs to be a lead water service, and what happens is our technicians go into the homes, and they'll verify what it is. So if it's a galvanize, if it's copper, it's not part of the program.
All right, and so they're not diving into the homeowner's financials?
No. Well, so what happens is the homeowner has to take their financials, and they have to contract the plumber out on the side. And then the utility then goes and reimburses them after the fact the full cost.
Okay. What are your wishes?
I'll make a motion for approval.
Motion by Thad, seconded by Sherry. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. Thank you, Adam. Next item is consider for adoption the action of the Plan Commission, Planning Commission at its meeting held on May 3, 2021. Oops, sorry about that. The Plan Commission met at 4:00 PM on May 3, 2021, in the common council chambers at City Hall. A list of attendees are on file in the clerk's office. The meeting was called to order at 4:00 PM. First item was approval of the report from the April 5, 2021 Plan Commission meeting. That motion by Tao, seconded by Blazer, to approve the reports from the April 5, 2021 Plan Commission meeting. That motion carried eight, six, zero. Item two is Plan 2-1-0273. Ken Hill requests for a certified survey map approval to create two lots at 2140 Carey Street, parcel ID 3404147, and 1020 21st Avenue South, parcel ID 3404145. Motion by Tao, second, or to approve Plan 2-10273, request for certified survey map approval to create those two outlots at 2140 Carey Street and 1020 21st Avenue South. That motion was seconded by Daven. Motion carried six A's, zero N's. Item three is Plan 2-10274. Peter Augustiniak requests for a certified survey map approval to create two lots at 464 Glenwood Heights. That parcel ID is 3412804. Motion by Daven to approve Plan 2-10274, request for certified survey map for the approval of two, to create two lots at 464 Glenwood Heights. That's seconded by Austin. That motion carried six, zero. Item four is Plan 2-1-0350. BNWC Properties, Inc., request for a certified survey map approval to create two lots at 2111 Jefferson Street, parcel ID 3400751. Motion by Tao, seconded, or to approve Plan 2-10350, request for a certified survey map approval to create two lots at 2111 Jefferson Street. That was seconded by Blazer. That motion carried six, zero. Plan 2-10334. Todd Forsier requests to register an existing residential non-conforming use on a property zoned B2 Commercial District at 2340 10th Street South, parcel ID 3412201. Motion by Daven, so used the seconding right away after the motion. Motion by Daven to approve Plan 2-10334, request to register an existing residential non-conforming use on a property zone B2 Commercial District at 2340 10th Street South, seconded by Austin. That motion carried six, zero. Item six is Plan 2-1-0335. Todd Forsier requests to construct in addition onto an existing detached accessory structure, which exceeds a total of 600 square feet in size, at 2340 10th Street South, parcel ID 3412201. Motion by Blazer to approve Plan 2-1-0335, request to construct in addition onto an existing detached accessory structure, which exceeds the total 600 square feet in size at 2340 10th Street South. That was seconded by Tao. That motion carried six A's, zero N's. Item seven is Plan 2-1-0307. Scott Kissinger requests for a site plan review for mixed-use housing and the construction of an exterior stair in the B1 Downtown Commercial District at 121 3rd Street North, parcel ID 3408153. Chairperson Blazer expressed his support for the plan in the Downtown Commercial District. Commissioners had questions about the structural integrity and building code requirement, which were addressed and clarified by staff. Motion by Blazer to approve Plan 2-1-0307, request for a site plan review for mixed-use housing and the construction of an exterior stair in the B1 Downtown Commercial District at 121 3rd Street North, subject to the following conditions, seconded by Austin. The conditions are listed in the report. Motion carried six A's, zero N's. Item eight is Plan 2-1-0336. Community Development Department Public Hearing and Action on Request from, on an amendment to Chapter 11 zoning code on the city's municipal code to remove the requirement for joint public hearing with the common council for conditional use permits and terminations of approval request. Public hearing opened at 4:31 PM. No one spoke in favor, and no one spoke against. That public hearing closed at 4:33 PM. Motion by Feath to approve Plan 2-1-0336 to amend the Chapter 11 zoning code of the city's municipal code to remove the requirement for the joint public hearing with the common council for conditional use permits and termination of approval request. That was seconded by Tao. Motion carried six A's, zero N's. Item nine, Plan 19-0938, Community Development Department, action to replace Chapter 46 sign code of the city's municipal code with a new sign code. J.R. Seaworth addressed the commission and believed that adding additional restrictions to businesses should be heavily considered. Mr. Seaworth also had questions on grandfathering and about specific language in various parts of Chapter 46, to which staff and the city attorney responded. The subject of sign variation, or variances and exceptions was also discussed during the meeting, as well as holding a public hearing. Commissioner Feath suggested that more time be given for review and analysis. Staff commented that the items will be placed on the June, that the item will be placed on June, June 2021's regular scheduled Plan Commission meeting, including a public hearing. No action was taken. Item 10 is adjournment, motion by, motion to adjourn by Tao, seconded by Blazer. Motion carried six A's, zero N's. That meeting adjourned at 5:11 PM. Mr. Kearns is online. Should you have any questions? Otherwise, what are your wishes?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the report of the Planning Commission.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion by Austin, seconded by Matt. Any further discussions or questions? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. Moving on to item 11, consider for adoption the action of the standing committees of the common council as follows. Item A is Finance and Property Committee meeting held on May 4, 2021. Mr. Ray.
Thank you, Your Honor. Finance and Property Committee met at 4:30 PM on Tuesday, May 4, 2021, in the council chambers at City Hall. All committee members were present. The meeting was live on Wisconsin Rapids Community Media Spectrum Channel 985 and Solaris Channel 3, online at WWR.WR-CM.org, or via WRCM's Roku app, and was streamed live on the City of Wisconsin Rapids Facebook page. All members of Finance and Committee were present. Also in attendance were Alderperson Veneman, Mayor Blazer, Joe Weixet, Sue Schill, Jennifer Gossick, and Tim DeSorci. A list of others in attendance filed in the clerk's office. Item one was to call the meeting to order. Chairperson Rayoam called the meeting to order at 4:38 PM. Item two, consider for approval the appointment of Kim Anderson as successor agent for the Class A beer liquor, beer license and Class A intoxicating liquor license for Aldi Incorporated, Wisconsin DBA Aldi number 08, located at 1211 8th Street South. It was moved by Katnaugh, seconded by Bemke, to approve the appointment of Kim Anderson as successor agent for the Class A beer license and Class A intoxicating liquor license for Aldi Incorporated, DBA Aldi number 08, located at 1211 8th Street South. That motion carried. Item three, consider for approval the appointment of Zachary Aki, excuse the pronunciation, whatever it should be, as successor agent for the Class B beer license and Class B intoxicating liquor license for Wisconsin Apple LLC, DBA Applebee's, located at 4311 8th Street South. It's moved by Katnaugh, seconded by Bemke, to approve the appointment of Zachary Aki as successor agent for the Class B beer license and Class B intoxicating liquor license for Wisconsin Apple LLC, DBA Applebee's, located at 4311 8th Street South. That motion carried. Number four, consider for approval the appointment of Crystal Lemke as successor agent for the Class A beer license and Class A intoxicating liquor license for Dogland Corp. LLC, DBA Dollar General Store 10309, located at 951 West Grand Avenue. It's moved by Katnaugh, seconded by Bemke, to approve the appointment of Crystal Lemke as successor agent for the Class A beer license and Class A intoxicating liquor license for Dogland Corp. LLC, DBA Dollar General Store 10309, located at 951 West Grand Avenue. That motion carried. Item five was to consider for approval the appointment of Crystal Lemke as successor agent for the Class A beer license and Class A intoxicating liquor license for Dogland Corp. LLC, DBA Dollar General Store 21068, located at 820 8th Street South. It was moved by Katnaugh, seconded by Bemke, to approve the appointment of Crystal Lemke, successor agent for the Class A beer license and Class A intoxicating liquor license for Dogland Corp. LLC, DBA Dollar General Store 2108, located at 820 8th Street South. That motion carried. Item six was to consider a request from Axe Garage LLC, DBA Axe Garage LLC, Jonathan Ruder agent for a Class B beer license and Class B liquor license for the premises loaded at 2660 8th Street South, Suite 106. It's moved by Bemke, seconded by Katnaugh, to approve the request from Axe Garage LLC, DBA Axe Garage LLC, Jonathan Ruder agent for a Class B beer license and Class B liquor license for the premises located at 2660 8th Street South, Suite 106, contingent upon the applicant submitting a map of the premises. That motion carried. Item seven, consider request from Headquarters Inc., DBA Headquarters, Raquel Dostal, agent for the Class B beer license and Class B liquor license for the premises located at 140 2nd Street North. It's moved by Katnaugh, seconded by Bemke, to approve the request from Headquarters Inc., DBA Headquarters, Raquel Dostal, agent for a Class B beer license and Class B liquor license for the premises- license for the premises located at one, four, zero, Second Street North. That motion carried. Item eight, initial review of alcohol alcohol license renewals. The committee conducted an initial review of alcohol license renewals and no action was taken. Item nine, the committee will vote to go on closed session under section nineteen point eight, five, parent one, parent E of the Wisconsin statutes, which reads deliberating and negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. In closed session, the committee will A, review the Grove Avenue right of way and consider the purchase planned from parcel three, four, dash, one, four, eight, zero, zero, for public right of way purposes. B, discuss negotiation strategy and strategy and parameters for offers for acquisition of property along West Jackson Street, West River Expressway to Jackson Street Bridge as part of the D O T project six, nine, 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 dash, eleven, dash, zero, eight. The committee will turn return to open session and may take take action in open session regarding purchase of land and offers for acquisition of the properties discussed in closed session. It's moved by Bampke, seconded by Katna to go on closed session. Roll call vote was in the affirmative. It was moved by Bampke, seconded by Katna to return to open session. The motion carried. No action was taken in open session. Item ten, audit of the bills. No action was taken on this item. Item eleven, sec uh the next meeting date, the next meeting, regular scheduled meeting for the Finance and Property Committee will be June one, two thousand and twenty-one at four thirty P M. Item twelve was to adjourn. There was motion by Rayo, seconded by Bampke to adjourn. Meeting adjourned at five, twenty-five P M. And we'll, Your Honor, move for adoption of the report.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion by Mister Rayo, seconded by Mister Katna. Go ahead.
I got a, I guess, a real quick clarification in terms of item number ten. Uh Mister Rayo, no action was taken on audit of the bills. What what does that mean? Are we gonna, you guys gonna take action next?
Next month, next month.
Okay. Thank you.
I believe is what it was.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
We didn't have them. Ted, we didn't have them.
Yeah.
So we couldn't take any action.
They'll be doubled up next month. Seeing no further discussion? Please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. Next item is Committee of the Whole meeting held on May fourth.
Uh meeting, I think, Your Honor, uh meeting of the Committee of the Whole of the of the Wisconsin Rapids Common Council was held in the council chambers in City Hall, four, 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 West Grand Avenue, and via remote video conferencing on Tuesday, May fourth, two thousand and twenty-one at six P M. Uh the public was invited to listen to the audio of the meeting. The meeting was also live streamed on the city's Facebook page. Uh members of the public who wish to submit comments to the council regarding the agenda item uh were directed to contact Council President, Thaddeus Kubitschek. No comments were received by Alder Person Kubitschek. Uh President in the council chambers at City Hall were Alder Persons Kubitschek, Bampke, Katna, uh Evenson, uh Veneman, and Zach, or Alder Persons Austin, and Rayo appeared via video conference. Also present in the council chambers were uh Mayor Blazer, uh Tim DeSorci, Joe Terry, Joe Ikestead, Jennifer Gosick, and Tyler Mickelson. Item number one, call to order. Uh Council President Kubitschek called the meeting to order at six P M. Item number two, transportation utility uh transportation utility model presentation uh was offered. Uh transportation utility model was presented by Jonathan Cameron and Jeff uh Mazanik from Ellers. Uh no action was taken on this item. I item number three, adjourn. There is no further business before the committee, and the Committee of the Whole adjourned at seven, twenty-three P M. Uh with that, I'll um move for uh a motion to approve.
Motion by Kubitschek, seconded by Bampke. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. Next item is the Public Works Committee held on May fourth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. The Public Works Committee met in the council chambers at four, 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 West Grand Avenue, Wisconsin Rapids via remote video conferencing, May fourth, two thousand and twenty-one. Doug Kubitschek, Ryan Austin, Matt Zach, were in attendance. Others attending are in file in the clerk's office. Item number one, call to order. The meeting was called to order at six P M. And for clarification, anybody realize the Committee of the Whole and the Public Works Committee that I'm reading off right now was a joint committee for the beginning for item number two, which will be the transportation utility model presentation, a background and model for developing a transportation utility, was presented with the Committee of the Whole. Uh item number three, M S four annual stormwater report review. Motion by Kubitschek, seconded by Zach to approve the M S four annual stormwater report. Motion carried three to zero. Item number four, review existing and proposed sidewalk along Fremont Street from Seventh Avenue to Tenth Avenue as it relates to Chapter six, Streets and Sidewalks. Motion by Zach, seconded by Kubitschek to install sidewalk on both sides of Fremont Street from Seventh Avenue to Tenth Avenue. Motion carried three to zero. Item number five, review Alder Person Katna referral to discuss overnight parking ordinance. Item will be added to the referral list. Item number six, review Department of Public Works Director of Public Works Report. Uh the Director of Public Works Report was reviewed. Item number seven, review referral list. Referral list was reviewed, adding referrals to review the overnight parking ordinance and consider an A T V U T V traffic to be allowed on some city streets. Uh item number eight, adjournment. Motion by Kubitschek, seconded by Austin to adjourn. Motion carried three to zero at eight, ten P M. And with that, I'll unless anybody has anything to hold out, I'll make a motion for approval.
Four and five. Uh any other items? Seeing none, we have a motion by Kubitschak. And seconded by Mister Ross. Uh Mister Katna, you're up.
In regards to holding out item five? I'd just like to address this again as we did at the committee meeting. I've received calls on this throughout my time on council in regards to the overnight parking ordinance. The fact that folks have to switch their cars or be aware of what side of the street they park on in the summer, I don't believe is necessary. Uh there is the theory that some people are getting cars parked in front of their house that they don't desire to be there and it's not people's best vehicles. I I see that as an issue that it must be very small compared to people continually getting ticketed for parking overnight when there's really not any reason that they can't do that. And we had a gentleman here at the night of the committee meeting who spoke about having to take his work truck home and how he was ticketed several times last year in regards to parking on the wrong side of the street. I I'm assuming more people have this issue, and I I know just personally outside the people who've called me on this that it's just a thing people forget about, or if the people come from out of town, family members, they don't realize that we have that ordinance in place. So I don't see a reason for us to continue with that. So I'd like to make a motion that from the date of May first every year to September thirtieth, we allow parking on both sides of the street. That would still allow for vehicles to have to move in the winter for snow falling.
There's a motion on the floor already um to approve the report holding out items four and five.
So actually, actually, we should have voted on the on the. Yeah, I missed that. We should have voted on the balance of the report. So if you'll withdraw your motion, Jake.
I'll I'll withdraw my motion and bring it back after.
Yep, and then let's vote on the balance of the report excluding items four and five.
I'm good.
Okay. So, oh geez, sorry about that. Please cast your ballots. Okay, thank you. That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. Mister Katna, if you would like to.
So again, uh as I just noted, I would like to make a motion to change the ordinance for overnight parking to no parking or the every other side parking, only to apply during winter months and be able to park on both sides of the street, May first to September thirtieth every year.
We have a, yep, May first through September thirtieth would be open parking.
Yep.
So we have a motion on the floor. Is there, and we have a second by Veneman. Now, go ahead.
I just, I guess I have a problem with that. I get what Jake's saying is it is cumbersome to move vehicles from one side to the other. But I do know many of friends and different people that I have talked to, um like you were saying, the undesirable vehicles that are parked there, if that doesn't give them a motive to move, they're not gonna move. So people, you might have a vehicle parked in front of your house all summer long, and there's nothing anyone's gonna be able to do about it. So I have a problem with that, I guess.
Thank you. Matt?
So clarifying question, we're saying that anybody has the ability to park anywhere on the road overnight at any time between this, between these dates? Is that kind of what we're talking about?
That's correct.
Because I'm assuming we put this in order or in place for a reason, kind of what Cherry was talking about. So I guess we, if we were to attempt it, we better be prepared for the, you know, the swing to the other side, the pendulum swinging to the other side. That's all.
I don't know if Joe remembers, but we we used to have no parking, and then it went to alternate side. Then I believe there was a summer, did we not? I think that, I think it was Bob Nash, or back then, then they kind of did a trial, and then it went back. Now, Tom might remember this, too. I I don't remember the particulars as to why, though. And also just to let you know, um city staff right now is submitting um information, concerns, questions um to Joe Terry to bring this out at a public works committee in the future. Uh so I know that's going on internally, um getting kind of feedback from the police department and then all the other departments. So that's also going on, just to let you know. Go ahead, Ted.
Is this how we're gonna approve uh ordinance changes now in the future? Usually, someone brings forth a copy or at least some kind of written statement, or at least some kind of information to the committee so that the committee can talk about it and hash this out. There was absolutely nothing brought, and in fact, nothing brought in the manner of an ordinance change. And if we're, if 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 an ordinance was adopted at one time, in my opinion, we need to have information that uh provides over the top information to change it. We just can't willy-nilly change ordinances. But if this is how we're gonna do it, I guess that's how we're gonna do it.
Mister Evenson.
I agree. Um I think the whole parking policy perhaps needs an update. Maybe there's something they can do in the summer where you still have to change even odd sides of the street, but perhaps there's a program where someone that occasionally does that could call in. I mean, I mean, I know that's cumbersome. Okay, okay. Um again, I guess I just really am concerned with the vehicles that would be parked there all summer long, and I just couldn't vote for that, I guess. Thank you.
Um Mister Rayo.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I think this is um, I think as the minutes uh state on there was to be put on a referral list for the committee to bring up uh at the appropriate time, and I think that's uh what we should do uh to get, I guess, input from from staff of pros and cons of what there there may be, or or other input from uh concerned citizens of what uh there may be. Some have been mentioned here this evening, even that was through the discussion over all the years that this has gone on. And also with that is um, um, I think on the noise, uh, the one that also uh, the vehicle shouldn't have been parked on either side of the street anyway because of the weight restrictions of what the vehicle was. So I, you know, all this stuff, I think, has to be um, should be talked about. Maybe it's time for to go over the uh ordinance that we have to see if it can be changed, updated, or what to do or to change to, as was suggested this evening. But I think we should uh go through the uh committee process and get that uh so everybody can will have their kick at the cat if they want it. And uh that uh through that, if there is a change that in the uh ordinance would, there would be a proposed ordinance that would be put together to um reflect the desired changes and then add to be brought back again. So I think that that's the route we should go. I understand the, you know, feelings of people don't want it, and uh over the years, I've voted differently than what we have. So but I think to debate this, some of the things I think people have raised has been um narrow streets and that of, you know, parking. And if you have narrow streets, people can park on both sides instead of one or the other. So I think, you know, there's a number of things to look at. So if uh if staff is looking into things, then I think if we, you know, the publication of this one would be on uh the agenda for public works that the public can uh tune in and that to um attend the meeting or whatever that uh so we can see where we want to go with this, if anywhere. So I think that to have the discussion is fine, but I think uh tonight it's just uh go with what the minute said, and that's to that it's on the referral list of public works, and they'll bring it up as information is acquired to do that. Thank you.
Jake?
Thank you. What is the number that the public can call to note that their vehicle is gonna be parked on the wrong side of the road overnight? Because at the committee meeting, it was stated that since we got rid of our dispatch, that's not available.
And and I I think I brought that up, and so I'm not sure. And I guess the chief can clarify it, because when we had our dispatch center, you could call in and they put you on a list of for up to three nights. And then then we were advised that after that, the county dispatch was not gonna do that, you know, keep that running list for us.
Yeah, that's usually how it's done. They call dispatch, and dispatch has to get in contact with the patrol supervisor phone, which they have with them, and it's noted by the patrol supervisor. And you're right, they get up to three days. Say if family comes into town with a forty-foot R V and it's not gonna fit in the driveway, we say, okay, you got this many days to park it before you have to move it.
So then um all they need to do is call the dispatch center?
If they call dispatch center, they can be put in in touch with the patrol lieutenant. Uh I prefer not to give that number out because of the way the patrol demand is going up on that one.
But that does not preclude, because when we also did that, that was, I guess I'm speaking from my experience, that was when we had no overnight parking. So when they call in the dispatch, are they requesting same side parking for up to three nights or because they can alternate?
It, I guess it depends on on the circumstance. I mean, the the number of requests are are myriad there. You know, the big camper, or they want to park, there's not enough cars, the whole family's over, so they have to park two cars in the street every night type thing. It's like every request is different, and they're really addressed on a on a case by case basis by the patrol lieutenant.
Okay, thank you. Attorney Schill, do you have?
Yeah, I was just gonna echo kind of what Alder Person Kubitschak and Rayo had stated that at the committee meeting, uh and even as the agenda is is written for the committee, um it was not very specific, and the and the committee did not uh really take any action on an ordinance. So I think now coming to the council tonight, I don't think it would be reasonable to expect that people would have known that this was actually that an ordinance was going to be considered, uh especially since no one was directed to to uh put together an ordinance. So I would be cautious in uh, you know, in in trying to adopt an ordinance. It wouldn't be really even be possible tonight because you do not have something in front of you, and we would need to come back next month anyways. But I think in fairness to uh the public and the people that are interested in this, I think um, you know, a reasonable look at it would would basically be that that this wasn't going to be decided tonight, and it was going to go back to the committee. Uh so I just put that out there, that um I think to do an ordinance tonight would be premature.
I guess as long as yours, my question is, if if they would go ahead and vote on? and vote on this motion and voted it, say they voted it down, that they wouldn't approve of it, then it would probably preclude having any further discussions at a next meeting about it? Would that, aside from?
Um, no, I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't state that. I think if another person feels that they, they wanted to pursue that, but, and if it, no, I, I don't, I don't think that's the case, that it forestalls any, any more, more, uh, I mean, that's just their, their specific choice on what they want the ordinance to say, and, and just because it's not accepted tonight doesn't mean that it can't be talked about further. So, I mean, I think at most, it would be, there might be a motion to direct staff to put an ordinance together. But as I said, I think it's probably best to just be talked about at the committee level, because that seems to be what the recommendation was. And I don't think that, unless there's a lot of people in the audience that are wanting to speak about it, thinking that it was gonna be on the agenda. But, yeah, I mean, I, I guess I think that maybe if Jake wanted to withdraw the motion and, and have, have this talked about at the next public works committee meeting. But if he wants to proceed it, the effect is basically, you know, if it's defeated, it's still gonna go back to public work. And if it's approved, then I'm gonna have to come back next month with an ordinance. Anyways, it's gonna have to be unanimous, it might be three months before anything happens, so.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Veneman.
Um, I'm not sure Jake does want to withdraw his motion, but based on the comments by several, by the majority of the group and by, and Attorney Schill, I'm actually gonna withdraw my second.
Mr. Katna?
Thank you. I will withdraw the motion. It'll stay on the public works referral list. I would just like to see the option to call in to the department, or rather the dispatch, which is the non-emergency number, correct? And that they can be transferred to the supervisor phone somewhere on the website, cause I don't think most people know that. Uh, and it's, I don't see it anywhere on here. So if we could at least do that, I think that might take care of all this. But like I said, I don't think most people know this, and, and three days is a pretty good amount of time, in my opinion. So I'll withdraw the motion and leave it for further discussion.
Thank you. You're good? Okay, so I guess we'd still need to have a motion to adopt the action of, would, there was no action on it, but would we still need, Sue, would we still need to adopt that item?
Uh, I think so.
Okay.
Basically to maintain it on the referral list or refer it.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to adopt item five.
As presented?
As presented.
Thank you. We have a motion by Katna, second by Evanson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. And our next item was number four. Uh, Mr. Bemke.
Thank you. I believe the, this is the sidewalk issue on Fremont Street, and I do believe that sidewalk was approved both on the north and south side. I guess my issue with this is we have residential on, on the south side of the road. We have an industrial property on the north side of the road with truck traffic, parking lots, the whole thing that goes along with an industry. And I'm just wondering, do we really wanna encourage people, kids using the sidewalks on that side of the thing, on, on that side of the street, when we have, in fact, residential on the south side and a sidewalk will be placed there? So I'm just wondering if Mr. Icesd would like to comment on this at all?
Sure, I can share a little bit of input, I guess, as far as what we, what we were thinking when we brought it before the, the committee. Reviewing the ordinance, the ordinance in chapter six requires that any collector street, which Fremont Street is, has sidewalk installed. And so it doesn't specify which side, and certainly the, since the area was developed, sidewalk has been on one side of the street. And, and there, there's pros and cons for sidewalk on one side versus both sides with Sunoco Corenzo property being an industrial-type facility. I would think that in most cases, you, you wouldn't see sidewalk associated with that type of property. But nevertheless, you know, thought that we'd bring it before the council and see if there was a decision that way.
Uh, Mr. Katna?
I'd just say I agree with Mr. Bemke. I don't see any reason to have sidewalk on that side of the street. And with the possibility of encouraging or opening it up to people to walk on it, could be a little more danger than we need.
Thank you. Council, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you. The reasons we, I guess, approved that motion was, one, it is a, I apologize. Joe, what's the name of the street again?
Fremont?
Collector's Street. It's a collector's street, and every other collector's street around there has to have sidewalks put in. If anybody moves into that area or does anything different in, in that area where Sunoco is, if they moved out and somebody else moved in, then we would, they would have to put the sidewalks in at that time. It was just something that we're trying to get those sidewalks in, and this was a place that they were supposed to go, and they probably should go. But it's understood that if they're there, people may walk there. Chances are good they'd stay on the residential side. But the reasons that we saw were in order to keep it, keep the continuity going into the future, so that the sidewalks are in place.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Joe, if, is it, could you clarify? Is it if somebody moves into that building, that they would have to install a sidewalk? Or is it only if there was road repairs or something of that nature that they would have to put a sidewalk in on that side? And are there other collector's streets where we have not done sidewalks on both sides as ordinance states, to your knowledge? Thank you.
Yeah, so there, there's a wide variety of instances throughout the city. Past practice, we've got collector's streets with no sidewalk. And so, you know, when we get to these sorts of situations with the reconstruction, some of them aren't, you know, cut and dry answers. Regarding the redevelopment of the property, you know, in conjunction with what the ordinance states on that, any, any lots that are zoned, essentially commercial lots, so if, or institutional, that if they would develop a commercial or institutional type of property, sidewalk would be required at the time of, of that construction or development of that property. Industrial properties typically are located in industrial sites or away from residential locations.
So as it sits now, if there's a business in there, as it is now, they, I mean, in, a different business came in and utilized it for the same purpose, a sidewalk would not need to be installed there?
Right. The only, the only thing that would require sidewalk is the fact that it's a collector's street.
And it's a street that's gonna be slated to be redone next year, and that's why I think we're having a discussion.
That's correct.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Bemke.
I think Mr. Icesd pretty much said it. I believe he told us at that meeting that industrial parks typically do not or are not required to have sidewalk. This is an industrial property, and I, I do appreciate Mr. Zachar's comments, but I just don't think we wanna encourage people to use a sidewalk where you've got, there's semi-truck traffic there, parking lots. That's also where the recycling center is. So there's just a lot of reasons that I don't think we need sidewalk there. There is a sidewalk on the south side of the road that encourages people to use that. And, and I get all the sidewalk issues that come along with this. I just don't think it's a good idea to encourage people to walk over there. Thank you.
Go ahead.
So how would it work if we were to vote that we don't want the sidewalk on the other side of the road to kind of backtrack? How does that work?
So I think you would make a motion to approve the item as presented by committee, and then by your vote, you could, cause it'd be a positive motion. So then by your vote, you would say you vote no, and then enough people vote no, then it would not pass. Did I say that right, Sue? Sorry to put you on the spot, Sue.
Is there a motion on the floor right now?
No.
No. I would say if, then if, she should make an affirmative motion with what, what she wants it to be, like, for the, it to only be on the one side. And, yeah, versus, otherwise we'll end up with two motions again. But, yeah, I mean, I, I think that would be the way to go if, if that's the motion that, that she wants to make.
Thank you. That makes sense, true. Okay, good. Mr. Kubashak? Nope, you're good? Okay. Committee or council, what are your wishes?
All right.
Get the sergeant of arms out here.
I'll make a motion to, to install sidewalk on the south side of Fremont only.
Thank you. We have a motion to install sidewalks on the south side of Fremont only. And we have a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried five A's, three N's. Okay, moving on to item number D, Human Resource Committee meeting held on May tenth. Mr. Bemke.
Thank you, Mayor. Human Resource Committee met, committee, meeting was held on Monday, May tenth, 2021 at four forty-five via remote non-video conferencing from City Hall in the council chambers. All members were present. Also present were Mayor Blazer, Ryan Hartman, Jennifer Gosick, and Tyler Mickelson. The meeting was called to order at four fifty-five. Item number two, discuss and consider for approval the renewal of employee health insurance with Aspiris Health Plan, effective July first, 2021. Motion by Veneman, second by Evanson, to approve the renewal of the employee health insurance with Aspiris Health Plan as presented, effective July twenty-first, 2021. Motion carried three to zero. Item three, discuss and consider for approval employee health and dental insurance rates, effective July first, 2021. Motion by Veneman, second by Evanson, to approve the employee health and dental rates as presented, effective July first, 2021. Motion carried three to zero. Item number four, discuss and consider standing meeting times and dates for the Human Resource Committee. Discussion took place, no action was taken. Next meeting wa, next meeting date scheduled for July second, 2021, in the third floor conference room of City Hall at 5:00 PM. I believe, Jennifer, that may change. Watch your agenda, correct? The location, the time and stuff is set. Watch your agenda. So with that, item number five was adjourned. Motion by Bemke, second by Veneman to adjourn. Motion carried three to zero. Meeting was adjourned at 5:05 PM. And with that.
So we have a motion by Bemke. Second by Kubashak. And I think it should be noted that it wasn't an emotion, but I think the premium for health insurance went down six percent. Six point, yeah, about six and a half percent, which is kind of unprecedented and unheard of. And then I think dental saw a small increase, which I don't recall. Just for your information. I'm sorry, Ms. Rehm.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, just, and not to do anything with it, but on item four, the, was to discuss and consider standing meeting times and dates for the HR committee. And I'll just throw out some things from the far distant past that there were, were some quite healthy and vigorous discussions a number of years ago on unifying not just the committee meeting on the same day or tried to, but it was also that to actually have the three standing committees to try to come up with a day that they could meet all at, on the same day. So in theory, council members could attend all meetings, or one meeting, or two meetings on the same evening. But also in theory that went with it, that the public could attend all meetings on the same night, in theory, too. And instead of having the meetings, they used to be on three separate nights. So people, if they wanted to come and speak an item on three different committees, they had to come three times. And so we had some pretty healthy discussions many, many numbers of years ago of changing it, and really we did change it. And that's why we were on Tuesday, that it was, uh, changed all three committee meetings to meet on the same Tuesday. And that would all, and so that would be done. It was staggered in meeting times. And that's why at one point in time, HR, I think, met at four o'clock. Finance was four thirty, and it was four forty-five. But Public Works was six, I think, is how it went. And so that was the, just, just to give some insight to what the history was, and why at that point in time, it looked, was looked at, that maybe it was, it could be more convenient, but not just, not just for council members, but also, I mean, staff too, cause they're involved in different committees on some issues that are there, so they don't only have to be there one evening. The council could be there if they wanted to, to sit on, they didn't have to stay for the whole meeting. If there's just one or two items they want it to be, too, they could come in and partake in that, and then go out and do whatever, and come back for another meeting or whatever. So it was, and for the public. The public, it made that more convenient for them to come one night a week to the committee meetings. You know, and such as what we have with the entire council when we talk about everything. It's all done in one evening. So that was, it's just to lend some insight of what was, of what was done, and was tried to do, and we did do it. Obviously, probably there were, I won't say there weren't because of certain things, maybe a holiday fell or something that we had to juggle, juggle something around, but for the most part, we were able to keep the three standing committees meeting on the same night, in the same time. I don't think we ever tried having the meetings all meet at the same time. I think that's why it was staggered at four, four thirty, and six, or something. Just, just some things I wanted to make everybody aware of, so, thank you.
Yeah, we used to have that. We did two council meetings a month, and then we went down to the one. And then I think the thought was, oh, we'll just have committee meetings on that night instead of that council meeting, cause we're having council meetings that had no items on it, pretty much. Uh, Mr. Kubashak? It's one of those nights. Uh, Mr. Veneman?
Thank you for that idea, Tom. I actually think that's something we may, that should be considered. I think that was, especially when, I mean, a lot of times you can go to back-to-back meetings, there's a good half hour between where they're done. Pretty rare that they run into each other. Seems like there could be times where we could fit that in. Would be kinda interesting to consider that.
Thank you. And I think part of the problem becomes, given the four o'clock time, it, you know, it's, it's running into conflict with people still working. You know, so I would almost need to start staggering later. But there's been unfortunately many times that Public Works had to wait considerable amount of time because of a long finance meeting to start. It's happened. Uh, Bemke?
Thank you. So I, I guess what really brought this up is because of COVID- Thank you. So I guess what really brought this up is, because of COVID, this room is in high demand. We got a few scheduling issues. One of them, I think, we'll probably be working through in the next month or so. But just because of COVID and the demand for this room right now, and the fact that municipal court takes weeks two, three, there's just a lot of things going on that, I think we can work through this. We'll get through it quicker. We will find a permanent time and a date and a home. So, but, thank you.
Any further discussion on the Human Resource Committee report? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Mr. Zachar? Thank you. That motion carried eight As, zero NAs. And we're on to item 12, reports of other committees, commission boards, and departmental reports. What are your wishes?
I'll make a motion to file them in the clerk's office.
Thank you. We have a motion by Kubashak, second by Evanson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight As, zero NAs. Are there any referrals to committees? Hearing none, we're on to our last item. Thanks, Josh, for hanging out for the whole meeting. I look forward to eating lasagna with you tomorrow. We're on to item number, we're on to item number 14, which is adjournment. The motion by Rehm, second by Kubashak. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.